Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The cameras are rolling and the microphones are on. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's city council meeting, held on a Tuesday evening because of the holiday yesterday. We do have a full house in anticipation of Alderman Seno arriving shortly. She did text me that she's held up at work just briefly. We begin tonight's meeting with just a brief moment of reflection, if you will.
Do I have to pledge? Will you do this first?
We'll do this first. There was a, many of you may know, an employee who worked for the City of Geneva for nearly 40 years. His name was Ken Sanquist. Ken Sanquist started with the City of Geneva in the 1950s. He passed away recently, but spent 40 years, the longest-serving City of Geneva employee, in our water department. And we recognized Mr. Sanquist prior to his retirement, of course. Sadly, Mr. Sanquist passed away just a couple of weeks ago. So on behalf of his family, we wanted to extend our sympathies and let all of you know that Mr. Sanquist is fondly remembered for his contributions. So, thank you. We now begin with the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to invite our dear friend, Britta McKenna, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Britta. Yeah. Mr. Clerk, may I trouble you for a roll call, an official roll call?
Certainly. Mike Bruno?
Here.
Derek Bergart?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Jim Merdecky?
Here.
Mary Seno?
I'm Simontian?
Here.
Glenn Singer?
Here.
A good segue into our first presentation by our friend, Britta McKenna, who is representing Into at IMSA. Britta, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
You know, you've made the rounds up and down the Fox Valley.
I have. I've been to Oswego, to St. Charles. You're the last one on the list.
That's good.
That's all right. I found you.
Waited for good weather.
That's right. So I'm here tonight on behalf of the Illinois Mathematics and Science Academy and Into at IMSA, which is our new innovation center that actually fully opens up at the end of March, but we're in a kind of an early opening. Just as a little primer, if you're not familiar with IMSA, we're located in Aurora, just off of Sullivan and Randall Road. IMSA was established back in 1985 by the Illinois General Assembly as part of the state's initiative educational reform package with really two legislative charges. One is to provide the academic exceptional, let me start over, to provide an advanced academic and residential program for students of exceptional talent in math and science, AAKA the IMSA students that are there, and some are from Geneva. They come from all over the state, and it's for grades 10, 11, 12. So the first charge is really geared at the students, the ones that are there, as well as the ones we served around the state through after-school programs, summer programs. The second legislative charge is serving as a catalyst to teaching and learning around the state. So we actually work professional development with teachers throughout the state of Illinois. So that is Into. This is our new innovation center. We received a $1 million gift from alumnus and a co-founder of YouTube, Steve Chen. And that put us on our path three years ago of actually designing the space with the community to open up the space to King County, Fox Valley, that includes Geneva. So here's some pictures. So if you're not familiar with the Illinois innovation ecosystem, this is what it looks like. It's a lot of fun. We have universities in blue, federal labs, of which one is here tonight, Fermilab, Argon. We also have incubators, capital, and networks. So Into is actually the first secondary school innovation center to link into this, right? So we're going to be bringing up middle school kids to high school to connect with higher education, and then they connect with the labs, so we're creating this really nice, interesting mosaic. So Into has four communities. We have Maker Education, Makerspace, or things like 3D printers, Raspberry Pis, electronics, virtual reality, those types of things. Our STEM Talent Pipeline, we have programs that promote that, as well as entrepreneurship education and teaching and learning. And Into is really an incubator space for the community, and that's where I come in tonight. I like this quote by William Pollard. It just went up on our wall last Friday. "Learning and innovation go hand in hand, and the arrogance of success is to think that what you did yesterday will be sufficient for tomorrow." So if I was sitting where you all are going, you're going, "So what? This isn't Aurora. Why should Geneva care?" Right? Well, I think that I am here because I care about King County and the Fox Valley and how we all work together. I'd like to, for you to think about how Into can strengthen Geneva's position as an innovative city for education and commerce. And I'm glad you're here, so your board can hear. To connect Geneva with Fox Valley, Chicago, and national innovators and entrepreneurs. IMSA has nearly 3,000 alumni who are ready to give back. They live all over the world, and they're going to do it through this new welcome mat called Into, right, right there at IMSA. We want to co-create new pathways for solving community problems and collaborate regularly with Geneva schools, students, entrepreneurs, and organizations. I just came from the Fox Valley Food for Health up at the fairgrounds. We're creating a nonprofit consortium. We know that we can be smarter working together. So I just came from there to talk about what that could look like in having our students work on marketing plans and help them maybe with social media or some other marketing efforts, at no cost. Also, we just had a Get the Lead Out Hackathon, January 13th and 14th. We worked with our partner, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and seven area high schools, including Geneva High School, sent two teams. The principals stopped by. They pitched their solutions to a panel of 14 experts, subject matter experts, and at this point, we are now looking forward to implementing with the state CIO some of the solutions that were designed by the students. I can't reveal what they are because it's preliminary, but the students come up with great ideas. And so we are in a position to empower them with a lot of expert thinkers, helpers, and use those new ideas of the future to infuse kind of stagnant, you know, you think about government or, you know, you're not, you're not going to be stagnant, but the state of Illinois, all right?
Who's saying it, by the way?
Yeah, it is a good saying, because I know where I am. So we look to infuse those new ideas of the future and those new students that are going to be your future employees, so that you get to know them and what they're thinking about. So talent, our Talent Entrepreneurship Program actually has free interns for startups. Now, every Wednesday, we ship them off to 1871 in Chicago to intern for those startups at no cost, and I pay for the transportation. Why should I do that when Geneva and the Fox Valley has our own startups that should get free interns? So I'm looking for those types of startup companies that want to come to Into and have our interns intern for them at no cost. We also have the Teen STEM Cafe. We partner with Northern Illinois University, and we do this three times a year, where teenagers, we have a board of teens from several different area high schools. They pick the topics. They range from artificial intelligence to the physics of music was our last one. IMSA Social Entrepreneurship Leadership Team projects with the community. Our sophomores all do a social entrepreneurship project. So I want to bring organizations like Fox Valley Food for Health and others in to provide new ideas and infuse them onto their teams. Geneva nonprofits involve, as I mentioned, a nonprofit consortium that we're going to be starting in the fall, hackathons. The King County Department of Public Health was at the hackathon. We had nurses there that were subject matter experts. And to pitch at Think Cafes. There is, was supposed to be a Think Cafe tomorrow morning, but it got canceled because we have a lot of electronics technology being installed. So, but regardless, it's the fourth Wednesday of each month at 8:30. So actually, the City of Batavia came and pitched. It was Batavia Chamber. And they came and pitched, a five-minute pitch, about a new branding effort they're thinking about. They wanted to get feedback back from the audience. So Holly Deitchman made a presentation, and then she posed some questions to the audience, and we whiteboarded solutions, and we have a 20-minute think tank to provide her ideas that she can go forward with. I invite anyone from Geneva to also do that, no charge. We also have a Girls Into STEM, which is a movement where we have middle school girls being inspired by our high school girls at IMSA, and then we connect them with industry STEM mentors. Fermilab looking to you to have, provide some of those female STEM mentors. So I invite you to visit Into. You all have a free one-day pass. Come out and see what it's like. Come on an iDay or a Wednesday when our students are working there, and you're guaranteed to fall in love with all the projects that are going on. We also have Tuesday Tours at 10:00. It's a standing invitation. If you can get to IMSA at 10 o'clock, we give tours every Tuesday. I mentioned Think Cafe. Don't look at that tomorrow because we're under construction still. And eventually, I'd love to see Into be, you all join Into as a municipal member in the future. You can follow us on Twitter at IntoIMSA. You can, our webpage is sorely in need of help. Our interns are actually redesigning it, so you can go to there in the future. It'll be much better than it is now because it's under construction. And you can join our Into Facebook group. You just have to request. So if I, if I see where you all are from, and you're from Geneva, and you're at, you're asking to join, I'll let you in. But we have about 450 members of our group that follow this. That's my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments for Ms. McKenna? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you for the presentation. You know, I'm a big supporter of STEM. I'll try and seek out one of those tours. It sounds very exciting.
Great.
You're considered, pardon me for the terminology, are you considered a magnet school? I don't know how.
Well, you could, you have to apply, like going to college. So everybody from the entire state can apply. We have, we have students that are from Alton, Illinois. We have students, but 74% come are from the Chicago metro area within one hour.
Okay.
So with an aptitude for math and science, obviously, you test very high. You take your SATs.
Sure. Has, what is the, has there been ebbs and flows in applications? Are you, you know, in an environment that's sometimes a little more hostile toward science? Does that burden you in any way?
No. I think, I think that the students that are there, you have about a three or four to one chance, or one in four, one in three, of getting in. It depends on the year, how competitive it is. I don't think, other than calling it mathematics and science, the science team would rather have it called science and mathematics. That's about all the hostility we get. We really embrace diversity in STEM.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
What's your enrollment rate?
Our enrollment is 650 students. About 220 come in as sophomores and about 200 graduate.
Anyone from the audience? Any questions for Ms. McKenna?
And I'd be happy to come speak to Chambers or anywhere else because I'm on the road, and I'd love to, I'd love to spread the word about what we're doing and what we're trying to do for King County and the Fox Valley to work together.
Britta, just one observation. You discussed earlier, I think you used the word incubator?
Yes.
To some extent. Is it a fair evaluation to say that this is similar to 1871 in Chicago?
We actually, thank you for asking. Good question. We have a new program. It's called the Linkubator. And what we're doing is we have a cohort of three that we're piloting. We have a St. Charles startup. I think we've got an Aurora startup and one, I can't remember the third. Two are, one is a medical device, one is a nonprofit, and one is a real estate startup. And so they are, it's a below-market place where they can start. They can get all of the resources, our idea baristas, our subject matter experts, and the Into innovation, the ecosystem that we're building, so we can actually specialize help to accelerate their startup. And so we're hoping to work with partners and then place them in King County in the best place for them possibly to survive. So we, our channel partners that we've been working with are Fox Valley Entrepreneur Center, Investor Aurora, and the Women's Business Development Center. We'd like to add to that. We'd love to be able to get the word out to Geneva startups that here's a place that you can come get resources to help grow your idea and your startup.
You used the phrase idea baristas.
Yes. You'll have to come and find out. We have an idea bar. It's the first thing you see.
Is there a cover fee?
I'll buy a cup of coffee.
Yes, dear. Anyone else? Comments or questions for Ms. McKenna?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, as always. Without objection, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to just rearrange the agenda briefly and focus on item 3C, which is the proclamation celebrating the 50th anniversary of Fermilab. I was advised by Alderman Brown never to keep physicists waiting. So we have two special guests with us this evening. They are the Director of Communications, Katie Yurkowitz, and the Chief of Staff at Fermi National Accelerator, Hema Ramamurthy.
How's it going?
That's called phonetics. We'd like to come to the microphone. Hema, how are you?
Doing good.
Katie, how are you?
Great.
You might recognize the gentleman to your left, Alderman Kilburg, who serves with great distinction on your community outreach. I think it's committee or commission.
Board.
Board.
Community Advisory Board.
And what a celebration you had a few weeks ago. Did you bring the cupcakes?
It's coming on its way.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
And happy anniversary.
Thank you very much.
And how long have the both of you been on board?
I've worked for the lab since 2005.
Me from 2010.
And, and Hema, Chief of Staff. What's that?
Basically, I work for Nigel Lockyer, the director.
You do, okay.
And I keep the senior team coherent with all our international activities. I kind of liaise with the Department of Energy and connect the senior team and our lab to work on our mission priorities, so.
That's cool. So you travel internationally frequently, I assume?
Not frequently.
Not too bad. Where's home for you?
I'm basically from India, but now I live in Hanover Park.
Oh, you do?
To Schomburg.
It's not too bad of a commute.
No, not at all. 15 miles.
Yeah, what the heck. And Katie, how about yourself?
So I'm the Communication Director of the lab, which means I'm responsible for our internal communication, external communication, public relations. I work a lot on outreach as well. So one of our jobs is to run the Community Advisory Board, which Alderman Kilburg has served on for a number of years, which we're very appreciative of. And another part of our work is to organize the 50th anniversary celebration. So for those wondering how we marked our anniversary, so June 15, 1967, was the day that employees of what was then known as the National Accelerator Laboratory showed up to work in Illinois for the, for the new lab. So that's what we've set as our anniversary date. In fact, our first director set that as our anniversary date. And we're going to be organizing a number of things throughout the year to which community members can come to. We had a few already in January, and then the huge one will be on September 23, when we'll have a really big public open house, the likes of which we haven't had for about 20 years.
Now, is there dancing and what have you at the huge public open house?
If you would like to, if you would like to dance at the open house, you would be more than welcome to, yes.
I was curious whether, you know, all these smart folks do all that stuff, so.
We do, we do. But in this case, we'll be mainly opening our behind-the-scenes areas for, for public tours and, you know, organizing shows and talks.
And Into the Tunnels as well?
We are definitely trying to make that happen.
Really?
Yep.
Who needs to sign off on that?
Lots of people.
Now I know why you're the Director of Communications. Well done. Well done. Well, Alderman Kilburg, would you like to say anything?
No, it's, I've lived here, I'm sorry. I've lived here about 30 years, and Fermi was always a mystery until I got involved and I had an opportunity to serve on their Citizens Advisory Board. And, you know, I'm not involved in developing the projects. Essentially, what we're providing the lab with is, is feedback as it relates to the community and, and how to build goodwill, how to try to address issues that might surface between neighborhoods and the lab over, over time. You know, I think, you know, it's a great asset for the Fox Valley. It, it's, it's one that I don't think often is, is fully appreciated, but it's great, it brings a lot of resources to, to our communities, really international, international outreach. We have scientists from around the world that, that, that work at Fermi for an extended period of time and then move on. The other aspect about Fermi, I think, that a lot of people have, have shown some concern about is, is that when the accelerator shut down, they thought Fermi was going to close its doors. But really, it's going through a metamorphosis, and really, there's some exciting things on the horizon as it relates to Fermi and its future. And I would encourage everyone to, to take advantage of the, the science, the, the opportunities that Fermi present as a resource to the community. I just don't have anything but good things to say about my experience as working with these people.
Fantastic. Alderman Bruno?
I'd like to piggyback on that, too. You know, the Fermilab, at the very superficial level, is tremendous economic benefit to us with so many people living and working and dining and shopping nearby, but the, the, these types of pure research facilities are so critical to, you know, to us maintaining our standards as technical leaders, pure research. It's hard to sell sometimes when you don't know what you're going to discover, but the, the payoffs can be enormous. And I think we're very lucky to have this type of facility in our backyard here. So thank you, and happy anniversary.
Hema and Krista, or Katie, excuse me, by way of history, the entrance off of Kirk Road that all of us who had been here for a while have taken, the beams in that entrance. What is the history of those beams?
So, so that, that's, it's a sculpture that was designed by our founding director, Robert Wilson, who was a big hobbyist artist and architect, as well as a famed physicist. The steel is actually taken from a decommissioned Navy ship. I would have to get back to you on the name. I admit, I have forgotten the exact name, but, but, you know, there was a warship that was decommissioned, and the steel was made available to the lab for a number of purposes. Some of it was used for the technical equipment, and then the, some of it was used to build the sculpture. The name is Broken Symmetry. And so most people who drive through don't, aren't, don't realize this, but it's called that because if you stand directly under it and look up, it looks perfectly symmetrical. So the three arms come together. And it, as soon as you move away from there, it's, it's not symmetric, so the symmetry is broken from all other angles, so. If you ever go there on a very deserted time, you can kind of run out to the middle and check, but.
How much time do you have before the security guards come out and?
You could do it.
Privilege information?
You could do it. You could do it.
Sounds like you could drop a name.
And both of you, I trust, are fluent in the periodic table?
We are. I am.
Are you?
Yes.
I understand they just discovered a new element several months ago.
That may be. We study, we study a slightly different periodic table, to be fair.
I understand.
So there's the periodic table of the elements, and then we study a different periodic table of the fundamental constituents of those elements. I could go further, but I won't.
What did she say?
In my former life, I was also a physicist, so.
Is that right?
I would just like to say, following on what the Alderman mentioned about the lab, Fermilab really, really values the great relationship it's had with all of our neighbors for the past 50 years. I've worked a lot with my colleagues from other Department of Energy national laboratories who don't benefit from such a good relationship with their neighboring towns, and it's really something that our lab values very highly. And we really try to do as much as we possibly can, keep the site open for recreation, to ensure that we can keep that good relationship going. So we really, really do appreciate the support from the City of Geneva and all of our other surrounding towns, so. Thank you very much.
Well, we value you as well, so. We have a proclamation this evening, ladies and gentlemen, to commemorate the 50th anniversary of Fermilab. I would like to ask for a motion to, so, motion by Alderman Marx, seconded by Alderman Bruno. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ladies, may I present this to you?
Bring the staff photographer.
They didn't introduce staff photographers.
I get paid enough.
Want to see the audience? So thank you again for being with us, and thank you for the important work that all of you and your colleagues do. Thank you. Doubling back to item 3B, our friends at the Chamber of Commerce have their annual report presentation to the community. We have the President, Gene Gaines, with us, and we have a gaggle of people. This is all fantastic. Mr. Lieben said earlier, you're going to see some new faces tonight. That's great.
Here I am.
There you are.
This is our annual report, and I think I've been giving this report since we started Hotel Tax. So that probably goes back to the old Hotel Jadeva when rooms were $20, and that frightened people a lot, but it was really a pretty nice place to stay. And instead of a soliloquy from me, I, we decided we'd bring some friends tonight to make it a little more entertaining for you. But first, I'd like to introduce some people from our hotels, accommodations. We have Nina Hayman from Oscar Swan, Kimberly McNamara from Comfort Inn Geneva.
Hi.
And Paul Ruby from the Harrington. I'd like to introduce our staff. We have Jeannie Sawtell, Laura Rush, Myvanna, Krista Anderson, Judy Carroll, and new to our staff, Robin Shion, like three days new. We have some board members in the audience. Mike Olsson, owner of Stock Homes. Scott Lieben, owner of Lieben Financial. Tim Riley, owner of Riley Drugs. Gordy Hard, owner of Valley Insurance. Mark Spierle, owner of Money Mailer. In the audience, we also have some businesses, I think, who are here to support us. I see Grahams. I see Nosh. I see Patent House. I see String Works. And there are some other members here, too. Also, we have a member who wanted to make some comments, but he was unable to come, Tom from Anastasia. So his comments are rather lengthy, but they're in your packet, great for later reading. Our first speaker tonight is Susan Hong. She's a member of the Board of Directors, and she is owner of Fox Valley E-Values and Deals. Susan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm also a Geneva resident and a, and a local business owner, so I'm glad to be here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce tonight to talk more about the, the impact of tourism dollars in our community. So I wanted to step back, first of all, that the screen has got lots of data on it, and in your packet, you have a lot more, but I want to sort of step back and talk about the variety of the impact of tourism dollars. Things like sales, profits, jobs, tax revenue, and income are all sort of that variety of that impact of that tourism dollar. So you might think that the most direct impact would be things like lodging, restaurants, transportation, amusement, and retail shopping. But we're also going to talk about some of the residual effects of that tourism dollar that's coming, coming into town. So a lot of the data that, that's in the first page of your packet really has to do at the state level. So just to give you sort of a, a level of, of data at that point, the tourism industry in Illinois hosts about 109 million visitors in 2014, which is the most recent data that we have available to us. And that was an increase from the previous year. Visitor spending is up about 5.4% in that same year, and 7.6% increase in hotel motel tax revenues for that same year. So there are nice increases from that standpoint. State and local tax revenues from tourism is well over $2.7 billion in 2014. The average leisure visitor, a tourist, spends in Illinois about $114 per day, per person. So, interesting. It's big business. Visitor expenditures in 2014 directly impacted or supported 306,000 jobs, with an increase that year of about 5,000 more from the previous year. So that's a state-level data, and we're going to, we're going to take a look a little bit about how does that relate to, to Geneva. Make sure I don't forget anything here. So you, you might ask, you know, what happens when a tourist comes to Geneva? How does that, that money flow? And so let's just take an example of somebody coming, coming into town to, to attend a festival, okay? They may spend some money at the local hotels, spending. They may spend some money at the local hotels, spending money dining, shopping, things like that. But there are other things that happen to that money after it comes into the community. So, let's take the example of somebody staying at the Harrington. The Harrington is possibly going to need to call the local plumber to help them out with issues, okay? The local, Stockhomers might, will need to replenish their foods and their supplies every single week. Those particular businesses also will hire other local professionals to print business cards or plan marketing campaigns or hire a local CPA or financial planner. So, that money turns over seven times as it moves throughout the community. There isn't just one person or one business that is impacted greatly by that tourism dollar. It's shared among many local businesses. So, I think that's an important point and almost, as you noted in your packet on that page one, almost 5 million in sales tax, tax dollars annually coming into Geneva come from tourism. A large percentage of that comes directly from tourism. So, you might ask, how do tourists know about Geneva and how do they get here? So, this rolls right into our branding, which is the Picture Postcard, which began back in 2004. And most of you are probably very familiar with some of these ads that you see in front of you. And branding is important because it basically is a promise to our customers or our consumers, our tourists that are coming to town as to what they can expect when they come to Geneva. And how does that differentiate, how we differentiate ourselves from the other local communities or the other places that they might be Googling to find, to go to visit? So, we want to stand out and we use this Picture Postcard branding that we started way back when. To this day, we still use that in everything that we do to drive that tourism dollar back into our community. You will see this type of advertising in print, but you also see in electronic marketing as well as a website, as well as hearing some similar type things on radio ads that you, you're going to hear a few tonight. So, we keep that visual as well as that verbal, emotional tie to Geneva through the Picture Postcard. Now, what's important about this is that the Geneva Chamber of Commerce is the integral, central part of communicating this out to the tourists, all right? The local merchants are, you know, they don't have a lot of advertising dollars themselves. So, they're using their funding to promote their restaurant or their retail location. That's where their focus is. So, the chamber is a central hub for all those members and those businesses to come together so we can get the word out well beyond that to drive that tourism dollar back into Geneva. And right now, the way that's, this is funded is through the 3% hotel motel tax that we use to promote from that 45-mile radius outward to drive that tourist into town to spend money and have that turn over seven times throughout our, throughout our community. We do not get any grant monies for this. This is through that 3% hotel motel tax solely. So, we also use this branding not only for Geneva on a whole in our business community, but also to drive tourism to festivals. You know, people love to go and do things when they're looking for a place to go. So, you'll see the same Picture Postcard weaved into all of our festival marketing that we do. And again, that 3% that we're using in hotel motel tax is used to place these types of ads in larger magazines that are focused on that 45-mile radius or out. For example, Midwest Living. It's going to reach a lot of people in our surrounding states to try and drive tourism directly to Geneva. But we still use the Picture Postcard branding for that consistency in order to get our message out to them. Now, that Picture Postcard is also used in a few different ways. One of them, you might have noticed, at Christmas time, underneath a famous tree outside at Christmas time, there was a big 3D display of a Picture Postcard. And we worked with State Street Jewelers to put that together. It was a great idea that they brought to the table and our visitors could take pictures and post them and they had a great time, created that funny motion that we used and they used it to obviously drive people to their business, but we encouraged people to do that. And the city actually uses the Picture Postcard image as well. You, the city actually sells this Picture Postcard license frame right here at City Hall downstairs. So, that Picture Postcard is used, you know, throughout the community in a lot of different ways to drive tourism. So, we also use the Picture Postcard really to go to the next level and drill down with restaurants. And I'm going to turn it over to our next speaker to talk to you how we use it with the restaurant trade.
Thank you. So, our next speaker is Jesse McCardo. He is with the Harrington. He's also a member of the Board of Directors and he's going to address restaurants and hotels.
Good evening.
Hi, Jesse.
Hello. As you may know, Restaurant Week was just January 23rd through 29th, just a few weeks ago. A little bit about the program. Restaurants participate. Member, Geneva Chamber members pay $75 to participate. Non-Chamber members pay $100 to participate. We do two specials. It's $19. You can make a package for lunch or $39 for dinner. It's the third, third year that the Chamber has organized this. We've seen increases in numbers every year. It really does come at a, at a good time for the hotel, for restaurants in general. January is generally one of the slowest months of the year for food and beverage, for dining out. So, this coming, the third week of January, really gives us a good boost. What we've seen traditionally is about a 25 to 30% increase in restaurant sales over a typical week in January for the week of Restaurant Week. This year, there were 19 restaurants that participated. Everything from dining for two for $19. We did a little bit different at Atwaters. We had a three-course meal for lunch for, and a, for $19 and a three-course meal for, for dinner for $39. Again, the numbers really were quite good for us. What we, we feel is the restaurant, the more the Restaurant Week grows, the more restaurants that we can get involved, the more the word gets out. Again, we'd like to see that number of 19 restaurants increase year over year and have more, more of the local restaurants participate to really get, get the word out. As you can see here, GME, the general manager of GME, stated that they had over 600 people order off the Restaurant Week menu over the seven-day span. What we've also found is nearly 11,000 new visitors to the Chamber website over that time period. So, another 11,000 people that now know about Restaurant Week and a little bit more about Okay. Many of the events held in Geneva create demand for hotel stays in the area that not only bring hotel tax, but they, it also brings sales tax to the area. Typically, we, we do a lot of corporate group events during the week where we'll have meetings that attendees are at during the day and a lot of times spouses or partners come with those people and are generally out shopping, eating, going to salons during the day while people are at the meeting. Now, many times those last several days. So, where we have some meals at the hotel, but other than eating at the hotel, they're eating in the local area as well. So, those that come to the area do provide a benefit for, for our hotel and other hotels in the area, but also for the local businesses. Advertising campaigns that the Chamber runs are not only beneficial to the hotels, but for all our local events. I'm now going to pass this over to Mike, who's going to review more of the festivals that the Chamber organizes.
Thank you very much, Jesse.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Simon and he is a second-generation business owner. He's also a member of the Board and owner of The Little Traveler. Mike?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. We all recognize all four of these logos. They're all near and dear to all of our hearts. I'm happy to be here simply because I'm happy to be in Geneva right now. I spent the past six weeks mostly on the road. The way that our business works is that right after the Christmas season is buying season and all the trade shows go on when retailers have the confidence of thinking they're going to survive another year. So, I've been to five different trade shows in five different cities and I've had a series of buyers who've gone to other trade shows. And it's really interesting because I've been doing this for almost four decades now. And it used to be when I'd go into a showroom and introduce myself, the question always is, so where are you from? And I'll tell them and they'll say, okay. Or they'll say, where's that? Or they'll say, oh yeah, Lake Geneva, I've heard of that. Or they'll say, oh yeah, isn't that where the Playboy Club is? Those are the real old people. But now, when I'm dealing with either an owner of a company or a sales manager, a national sales manager, I get one of two reactions. After I say I'm from Geneva, Illinois, there's usually a little hesitation and I'll get either, isn't that the Norman Rockwell town I hear about? Or, isn't that the town that has all the cool festivals? It's really amazing at a national level how many people know about Geneva for the reasons that we take for granted, but we know make Geneva special. If I'm dealing with a Midwestern sales manager, someone who we haven't bought from before and I introduce myself, it's inevitable that the reaction I'm going to get is, oh, good. I've been told I got to find an accountant in Geneva. Because Geneva's the town outside of Chicago where everything's happening. And usually, if it's somebody I'll establish rapport with, I'll say, now, what is it that makes you say that? Well, I've been told that there's the best collection of unique shops and restaurants in your town and it's good advertising to have an accountant in Geneva because that opens doors to other cities because everybody wants to be like Geneva. So, that all points back to the festivals and the work that the Chamber does to promote the festivals. If I'm dealing with a salesman that we're already working with, who we have a relationship with and I'll see them every six months, it's all the more predictable because then I'm going to hear, hey, I hear about you guys all the time on the radio. Or, I've seen your ads. Or, your festivals are really something. I got to make it out one of these days. That never used to happen either, but the word is spreading year by year and as more and more towns either shrink their festivals or try to imitate Geneva, Geneva becomes all the more unique. But the best is, we belong to a buying co-op. There's 75 companies with 125 stores and they're all stores similar to ours. They're destination stores in destination towns and we all get together to try to get better prices and better terms from our vendors, but we also share information. And I found that I'm a popular guy to sit next to at breakfasts and dinners and I always know when somebody sits down that I don't know real well, the first question's going to be, so how do you guys do your festivals? And I'll tell them a little bit about the festivals because they've all heard of them. And then the second question's going to be, so who do you hire to put them on? And I'll explain, well, we don't hire anybody, it's the Chamber of Commerce. Third question always is, so how big's your Chamber of Commerce? And I'll say, it's six people. And then they get really confused and they'll say, well, your festivals are really something. So, how do you get all this done with six people? And I'll say, well, the rest is volunteers. And then it's kind of a dumbfounded look. How do you get the volunteers? And then you got to explain the Geneva mentality, which most people don't get. They explain that this is a really unique community where everybody wants to be a part of it, everybody takes pride in it, everybody really enjoys the festivals and it just is self-repetuating. Final question usually is, and this is one that everybody in other towns can relate to that we really can't, is how do you guys navigate the politics? And that's usually the downfall of most of the other cities that these stores are in. And when I say, you know, that's really not an issue because the city and the Chamber have always worked hand in hand because everybody realizes the advantage of having these festivals and it's really, one hash, one hand washes the other relationship where we're all in it together. People just look and they're kind of amazed that it works this way. And it has worked this way for 40 years and it's neat that it still does and that we're all on the same team. You've all heard me say, and I'll say to anybody who will listen, the best three weeks at The Little Traveler every year, our Sweetie's Day's week, Festival of the Vine week, and Christmas Walk week. And it's because of the partnership between the Chamber and the city that we're able to do this. So, thank you all. And with that, why don't we listen to one of our commercials?
Thank you, Mike.
Hold on, time. There we go.
There you go.
Christmas in Geneva brings people together. It happens each year in the snow or fair weather. Shoulder to shoulder and mittens to glove, folks ring in the season with good cheer and love. Join in, young and old, small and tall, boys and girls, on December the 2nd when the season unfurls. Kids will ooh and they'll ah when the great tree is lighted. Had a visit to Santa, you'll all be delighted. There's hot chocolate, marshmallows, and chestnuts to roast. Candy cane pulls, carolers, so many Snapchats to post. Tour five festive homes the 2nd and 3rd of December and buy one-of-a-kind gifts for a Christmas they'll remember. Bring your kids, your spouse, and in-betweens who are single. Why not spend the night? Give a Geneva hotel a chance. For what to do and when to arrive, visit geneevachamber.com. Geneva, where the spirit of Christmas comes alive.
So, thank you much. And now, you're going to hear from Lisa Nelson from Carlson's.
Thanks again, Mike.
I should mention that we use that same actor every year, so he also brands us and he really enjoys doing that for us. The message changes, but the voice is the same every year. So, the next speaker is Lisa Nelson of Carlson Floor. She's also a second-generation business owner and she's also a member of the Board and serves on the Executive Board. Lisa.
Well, one of the things that the hotel motel tax affords us to do is to program, to advertise with our neighbors in the Fox River Co-op. And the Chamber has been working with these other neighbors for 10 years. And with that relationship, obviously, we're able to get more bang for our buck in our marketing dollars. And we work with Aurora, St. Charles, Northern Fox River Valley, which includes Algen and McHenry County. We're always able to do bigger and better, you know, and reach more people with those dollars and working together. An example being similar to Mike's situation, I know my personal business, we've been involved in a co-op for 20 years. And if you've known the home improvement industry over the last 10 years, I've been able to have people from the color marketing group come into my showroom and HGTV celebrity speakers. So, I understand the concept of what the Chamber's accomplishing by pooling those dollars with local communities. In 2016, you can see we promoted our Restaurants Come To Our Table. And that was put in the Travel Magazine and Midwest Living. Geneva received 200 calls to have brochures sent to people who saw that advertisement where the other local towns didn't receive any calls at all. In 2017, we're going to be promoting the 65 miles from Algonquin to Aurora and the bicycle trail. And by pooling that money together, we'll be able to put a sign by Route 38 for people to come off and use the local shops and restaurants. And also, we're going to be able to optimize our SEOs with those partners also.
And I'm going to end it. As you well know, the state's financial chaos has affected us, as it has everyone. Although they acknowledge that tourism is a major income-boosting industry, they've continued to cut, make substantial cuts in funding. I think I showed you before that each year we were able to write grants and add that back into the hotel budget, tax budget, so we had more money to spend. And as you can see, 2016, it was zero. We don't think there will be anything in 2017 and probably not in 2018. So, we're really on our own. Because these programs, the funding has been cut, we've been forced to cut our advertising. We've fewer, fewer radio ads, less digital ads, less print. So, we've been diluting our efforts and eventually that will catch up with us. You know, awards are wonderful, makes us feel good, but they also show us what the public likes. So, we've been happy to have these awards each year and hopefully in the next few weeks we'll see some new ones coming out. Make sure you vote. It helps if everyone votes for those awards. In the race to attract visitors, we're kind of like David and Goliath because our neighboring communities have a lot more money to work with. We know that those neighboring communities receive large amounts of monetary support from their city governments and a major, major share of the hotel tax. Of course, many of them have more rooms than we do. With our 3% share of the tax, we think we have been able to succeed with careful planning and selections that are tried and true. But a time for new products is also up on... But a time for new products is also up on us, so we are diverting some of those tried and true projects to reach a newer, larger audience with geo-fencing, SEO, and storytelling, and other options that will get us a more targeted audience and new visitors. The state mandates that the hotel tax be expended by the municipality solely to promote tourism, to attract non-resident overnight visitors. To meet those requirements, the dollars from the 2% of the, or the 3% of the tax are spent beyond the 45-mile radius that the state recommends for overnight stays. This is a non-home rule statute 65 ILCS 5/8-3-14, just in case you want to look it up. The state recognizes the Geneva Chamber of Commerce as a tourism agency, and the funds we administer are all spent on advertising. There are no administrative fees charged to this account. It is a good use of the resources when we are able to coordinate the funds of both the Chamber and the hotel tax. There's less waste and no duplication of efforts. And what we've shown you tonight is mainly all hotel tax, but we also have another budget that, as I say, coordinates with what we're doing. The funds from the hotel tax are essential to continue our successful campaign, and we do have a track record of good results. Our plan works, and our partnership with the city is a success story. And it takes a community, as you know, to make all this come together. With the Chamber, city services, and hundreds of volunteers, we are able to produce events that are successful, and we brand Geneva. It is a picture-postcard. We thank you for listening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jean. Any comments or questions from the dais? For either Ms. Gaines or anyone else who presented or anyone else present. Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, a wonderful presentation. I've long felt very good about having any role in the city, and I feel even better now. It's just hearing some of the stories about our notoriety, our brand, and how it's recognized. But do you have any more room on your calendar for another festival?
We're always open to ideas, Mike.
I can't imagine... I've got ideas, but we'll talk later. Thanks. But thank you for the presentation.
Is it a science and math festival by any chance? It's like a...
Well, you know, they said when Swedes got to Geneva, what'd they find? Italians.
Anyone else on the dais? Anyone from the audience? Thank you all very much for being with us on this Tuesday evening. Thank you for the great work you do. We move on with the agenda this evening, ladies and gentlemen. Item four on the agenda is amendments. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Alderman Simontian.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove...
Is this on the omnibus?
Yes.
In the next aisle.
Oh, sorry. I always get that one wrong.
Anyone, amendments? Item number five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine or can be removed from the consent agenda by either someone present and/or someone on the dais. Alderman Simontian.
Yes, could I remove item 11J from the omnibus agenda?
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve the omnibus agenda as amended?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion. Alderman Marks makes the second.
Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Craig Malandra.
Aye.
Richard Marks.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Motion passes with 10 affirmative votes. We skip down to, according to my ledger... Item 9A is to recommend acceptance of the fiscal year 2017 third-quarter goals status report.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Marks, seconded by Alderman Sino. Any questions or comments for either our department heads present and/or the city administrator regarding the third-quarter goals report presented? Hearing none, seeing none. A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously, Mr. Clerk. Item number 10 of municipal bills for payment, we kindly ask our clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $3,959,688.53.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Motion by Alderman Bruno to pay the bills as presented and available on the city's website and in our packets, is seconded by Alderman Sino. Any questions or comments regarding the bills as presented? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Craig Malandra.
Aye.
Richard Marks.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Tom Simontian.
Aye.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Item 10 passes unanimously. We skip down to committee of the whole items of business. Item 11A...
I recuse myself from 11A.
From 11A? Let the record show that Alderman Sino will be recusing herself from item 11A for the benefit of the public and those tuning in. A recusal requires the alderperson to actually leave the room while the matter is being discussed and debated. We will then call on her to return to the room next week as soon as this matter is resolved. Item 11A is to approve ordinance number 2017-04, authorizing 16th restatement of ordinance 2003-33 for construction of a 22,471-square-foot family residence clinic located at 298 South Randall Road in the Delnor Community Planned Unit Development.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Singer makes the motion, and Alderman Marks makes the second. Are there any questions or comments regarding this matter? I believe we have some guests with us this evening. Hearing none? Alderman Kilburg? Mr. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Craig Malandra.
Aye.
Richard Marks.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Tom Simontian.
Aye.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Item 11A passes with nine affirmative votes, no nay votes, and one recusal. Alderman Sino is returning to the dais. Do you want to say something?
I will. Want you to announce.
Let the record show that Alderman Sino has returned to her seat. Item 11B, folks, is to approve resolution number 2017-09, approving a cash contribution to the Geneva Park District and Geneva School District in lieu of land for Fargo Enterprises LLC. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion by Marks, seconded by Sino. Prior to discussion, I would like to ask the city attorney to make a brief statement.
The council's asked in the past to have an announcement if the vote requires something other than a concurrence of the city council. Under section 12-4, 12-4-5-5 of the city code, which is a part of the subdivision regulations, in the event that the city is, the city council is being requested to have some alternative contribution than is set forth in the code, it requires two-thirds vote of the alderman holding office. So, this vote would require seven affirmative votes.
Any questions or comments for the city attorney regarding that statement? Questions or comments from the dais? Questions or comments from the audience? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Craig Malandra.
Aye.
Richard Marks.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Tom Simontian.
Abstain.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
The motion passes with nine affirmative votes, no nay votes, and one abstention. We move on to item 11C, approve resolution number 2017-10, approving a preliminary final plat of subdivision for the Stanton subdivision, otherwise known as Fargo Enterprises
So moved.
Singer makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Marks. Questions or comments from the dais? Alderman Simontian.
Thank you, Mayor. During last week's committee of the whole meeting, I thought the mayor was not correct by directing Chairman Rodecky and the secretary to count my present and absenteeism votes as a vote for the majority. Instead of questioning whether the mayor was incorrect, I decided to get my facts straight and address it tonight. Unfortunately, after last week's meeting, at about 10:16 PM, I received a text from a reporter stating, "Call me, Burns accused you of being unethical." According to the mayor, and I quote, "Ethics laws require an elected official to disclose any and all business relationships he or she has with a petitioner seeking approval before the city. Tonight was a flagrant violation of ethics rules, and what we witnessed was disheartening on multiple levels. Simontian should have recused himself, both from the discussion and the vote." I don't take lightly when anyone accuses me of being unethical, so I had my attorneys look into the mayor's allegations, and they provided me the following opinion regarding that vote. You've inquired whether you have a legal conflict of interest arising under your capacity as a duly-elected alderman and a mayoral candidate in the city of Geneva. In relation to the proposed three-lot subdivision of Fargo Enterprises, Inc., on Canville Road, Geneva, Illinois, the request stems from the fact that your campaign committee has engaged Fagans, Inc. to assist with your mayoral campaign. Joseph Stanton is the sole owner of Fargo Enterprises, Inc. and Fagans. As an initial matter, it's my understanding that neither you nor Simontian for Geneva, Inc. possesses any ownership interest in the development, Fargo, Fagans, or any other entity in which Joseph Stanton conducts business. Rather, Simontian for Geneva has engaged Fagans to assist in campaign work. It's my understanding that Fagans regularly assists local campaigns in its capacity as a marketing, graphics, and public relations firm. At the February 13, 2017 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the City of Geneva, City Council, one agenda item included the request to Fargo for approval of a three-lot subdivision and, two, a sidewalk variation. During the meeting, you voted present during your vote for approval of the three-lot subdivision, and you voted to abstain during the vote on the issue of the sidewalk variance. Current mayor has indicated that you were required to recuse yourself from the agenda meeting and vacate the council chambers during the deliberations. We disagree. As further background concerning this issue, I understand the current mayor himself previously engaged Fagans to insist him, with his three previous mayoral campaigns, a congressional campaign, a Kane County chairman campaign, prior to his current campaign against you. I further understand that the current mayor never recused himself or abstained from any discussions before the Geneva City Council on the numerous occasions over the past 12 years when Mr. Stanton appeared before the city council. Illinois law provides guidance concerning when an elected official has a prohibited conflict of interest. For instance, the Illinois Governmental Ethics Act 5 ILCS 420/1, which applies to members of the General Assembly, states when a legislator has a conflict of interest, he or she should abstain from taking official action. The State Officials and Employees Act 5 ILCS 430/1-1, which applies only to state officials and employees, requires units of local government such as the city of Geneva to adopt an ethics ordinance no less restrictive than the State Officials and Employees Act. Following this lead, the city adopted by ordinance 2004-41 on May 17, 2004, an ordinance entitled "Regulations of Ethical Conduct, Political Activities, and the Solicitation and Acceptance of Gifts by Officers and Employees of the City of Geneva." The ordinance does not prohibit you from voting on the development had you chosen to do so, nor does it provide any legal requirements above and beyond the steps you voluntarily took not to participate in the vote. Robert's Rules of Order, which has been adopted by the city, states it is in general rule that no elected official can vote on a question in which he has a direct, personal, or pecuniary interest. It's R.O.N.R., Fourth Edition, Article 9, Section 46. You have no pecuniary interest in the development, Fargo or Fagans, and you would not have had a conflict of interest had you voted, which you did not. Rather, out of the abundance of caution, you voted present or abstain when the matters were called for vote. Under Robert's Rules of Order, your vote of present or abstain is considered to do nothing. It simply is not a vote, as stated by the current mayor. Further, we find no other requirement under applicable state law, the Code of Ordinances of the city, or Robert's Rules of Order, that an elected official must recuse himself in the situation described. I'd like my comments, as well as the Kane County Chronicle article, my attorney's opinion and my attorney's opinions entered into the records this evening. I also will be abstaining from both the votes this evening, as well as I am requesting that the city's legal counsel direct the mayor to remove my votes from the committee of the whole majority vote and register my votes as either majority or minority from last week's meeting. The vote should be registered as a present vote and an abstention vote. I'd also ask that my abstention votes this evening not be registered as either a majority nor a minority vote, but as an abstention vote. Lastly, I mentioned in the alleged ethics violation article, if I was wrong, I'd be willing to apologize. Per my attorney's opinion and allegations against me were obviously false. I hope that the mayor is honorable enough to apologize for his false allegations, and that the reporter does a follow-up article that the mayor's allegations were false and calling out Simontian on ethics violations was a mistake. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this is for you or for David, the modification of waiving the Canville sidewalks. If we... It's my understanding we have never not required sidewalks on a subdivision. Is that accurate?
I can't say that the city has never required sidewalks as part of a subdivision. We certainly have circumstances where it's only been provided on one side of the road or haven't been provided at all. But in my time with the city, we have made them a requirement for all new subdivisions. The way the subdivision ordinance is constructed now, it says that the planning commission shall require sidewalks for all new subdivisions, and if they don't, that relief has to be granted by the city council.
Thank you.
Alderman Singer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I find it essential to defend my vote that I had given last week. A number of citizens of the city have challenged me as to the manner in which I voted, and I would like to have this as a part of the record. The Geneva resident that owns the property and who plans to build his family's home on the corner lot asked the planning commission that no sidewalks be required on Canville or Burgess. His argument was the property would have sidewalks that lead to nowhere. He further argued that there was no reasonable explanation that additional sidewalks would ever be installed on Canville or Burgess. The planning commission agreed with him on Canville, but argued that Burgess was a shorter and less-travel street, therefore required him to build the sidewalks. The property owner had the right to appeal this decision, but did not. So, by vote of the committee of the whole, was not on a request from the property owner, but solely on whether I supported the planning commission's decision. I agree with the planning commission's decision because I felt it would be dangerous to encourage the use of sidewalks on Canville that would go 200 feet and stop. Both adults and children would be more apt to cross a busy street in the middle of the block than go back and use the crosswalk. I wasn't sure how I felt about the sidewalk on Burgess. But since the property owner was not contesting the decision, I voted to support the planning commission and demanded to add the Burgess sidewalk. My decision was based on what I felt was the safest for the residents of Geneva. In my opinion, a sidewalk on Canville would not be a safe route, just the opposite. I have suggested sidewalks be installed in other areas of town where I believe they would be a safe route, for instance, to a bus stop. In both cases, my position is based on what I feel is best for the residents of Geneva.
From the dais, anyone else? From the audience? Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you to the mayor and to the council. I have a few remarks about these sidewalks. My name is Daniel Bowery, and I live up on Fifth Street. I'm a Geneva resident.
Your address, sir?
Sorry, oh, 312 North Fifth Street.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll try to be brief. At first blush, this sidewalk doesn't influence me personally, but I view this as a microcosm of Geneva's planned development, how Geneva sees itself growing over the next 10, 20, 30 years, as I continue to be a resident. So I just want to make a few points. The safety argument, there seems to be some uncertainty about whether a sidewalk would or would not contribute to the safety of that neighborhood. And so in the presence of that sort of uncertainty and disagreement, it seems natural to me that we would follow what the law is. Furthermore, I guess I just want to add on a personal note, that when I moved to Geneva, my wife and I made the decision to move here because we view it as the total package, right? That it is a place which is welcoming, which is pleasant to be in, which is great for pedestrians and for businesses. So I want to hear what the committee's, the council's comments are about the future of Geneva. That is to say, if we don't build this sidewalk because it's inconvenient for the developer, then does that mean that we are also going to not build other sidewalks because it's also inconvenient for the developer? And over time, does that mean that we end up with sort of a patchwork of infrastructure? I think that we can all think of a few examples of towns that neighbor ours where that is the case, and those towns are less easy to get around and less pleasant to be in than Geneva's. All right, thank you.
Alderman Malaja, then Alderman Sino?
The only comment you made that I take exception to is that any decision, or at least my decision, was based on it being convenient or inconvenient for the developer. Quite the contrary, my decision was based on a strategic look at that neighborhood. We're talking about a neighborhood that, well, if our goal, if our objective is to get a network of interconnected sidewalks from Cambridge to James, we have to take a look at the properties and our ordinances and see how we can affect and changes that would get us to that goal. Right now, the way the law is written, you have to have a subdivision of three properties or more that would trigger the requirement for a sidewalk. We're not likely to see that. In fact, I think that just between Burgess and Southampton, of the properties to the west of the one in question, none of them will ever be divided into three properties. A couple of them could be divided into two, so you start looking at how we could change our ordinances to trigger that requirement. But where do you draw the line? Okay, so let's say we want to draw the line at subdivisions of any type. Between Burgess and Cambridge, how many subdivisions are we going to see? Not many. If we do it with teardowns, the same thing applies. So every way that I looked at this strategically, I see gaps in the sidewalks. So then you have to say, how do we fill those gaps? The city would have to take some financial role to fill those gaps, and we can take on those sorts of responsibilities or objectives. But as you pay attention to our meetings of late, the financial instability or the financial uncertainty that we all face, it seems to me it would be irresponsible to say to the community, we will accept that responsibility for those capital improvements when we don't know how to pay for them. And then I say, okay, maybe a partnership, public and private, maybe we could establish some sort of SSA in the neighborhood to see if the neighborhood would support paying for the sidewalks. And there's actually a gap somewhere between James and midway through the block. That gap has existed for a while, and to date, the neighbors haven't filled that gap. So I fail to see, it's got nothing to do with convenience or inconvenience to the developer, I just question the utility of a disconnected, disjointed network of sidewalks as opposed to a network that currently runs from logical intersection crosswalk to a continuous sidewalk on the other side of the road. I don't disagree that it's a great objective to have continuous sidewalk on both sides. I just don't know how we'll achieve that. And so to require this sidewalk at this time doesn't move us towards that goal until we can complete the picture, not practically, but in our minds, until we have some sort of a plan where that completion is possible. So I agree with your idea about successful pedestrian traffic throughout town or safe pedestrian traffic throughout town. I just disagree with the inference that this is all being done at the convenience or inconvenience of the developer. My opinion, my take may be wrong, but it's not based on the developer at all, it's based on a strategic view of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Alderman Sino?
I just want to pretty much agree with everything Mr. Malaja just said.
Never.
It has, I know. It really has nothing to do with the convenience of the developer. I drive Canville Road every day. I think having that sidewalk end where it would end is terribly dangerous. I just, driving here now tonight, there's that, there is a crosswalk that's striped in the road. Person was completely dressed in black, you know. We can put all the stripes, sidewalk signs up. It's safety, and that's my passion. I mean, I've sat in rooms and told parents that both their children have died in accidents, you know, at one time, and that's what I picture, crossing that road in the middle of it like that without any real crosswalk. And it's not going to happen. And the other thing is, there's been two, at least two teardowns that I'm aware of in that stretch, so we're not going to be able to go back now and get those residents to put sidewalks in. Just a couple months ago, we put sidewalks down on River Lane, and, you know, one of the people that live on that street were very upset that we put sidewalks in and had to help him make it look more aesthetically pleasing. So it really, to me, has nothing to do with anything but safety for me, so.
Alderman Radecki?
Point of clarification to Alderman Sino's comments, even a teardown of a single residence, we still could not require them to put a sidewalk in, correct?
Correct.
So even if there were properties there that were going to be torn down, as the way our laws sit now and the funding that we have, we still wouldn't have the ability to extend that sidewalk. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
Well, sidewalks. Sidewalks are a good goal, it's good municipal planning practices. The, you know, the argument of sidewalks to nowhere, as I've said before, is specious in this case because these sidewalks on Canville would be connected to crosswalks. In terms of it being a hazard, if, you know, if you're looking at a cyclist that's riding and then having to cross, it's not that great a distance. You can see the end of the sidewalk. If you can't see the end of the sidewalk from the intersection, then you probably aren't riding a bicycle because you've got some vision problems. I've long fancied the idea of a sidewalk bank. I've recognized more and more the complexity of that, but I think subsequent to this, I would certainly support the idea of us, as a city, having some type of discussion to, more creatively, if we don't bank that money, but if we waive sidewalks at, in this case, the Stanton subdivision, that they put in sidewalks in an existing known span that has a gap. You know, I'm not going to stop this project based on this, but I would have supported keeping sidewalks on all sides. I don't think it's the hazard that it's made out to be. And hopefully, we can have a discussion of creative ways to have these developers connect our sidewalks either in situ or elsewhere in the community. Thank you.
Before I recognize Alderman Singer for a second time, is there anyone else who wishes to speak from the dais or from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jean McGowan. I'm at 227 North Cambridge Drive here in Geneva. And I may have a question for Mr. DeGroot. Are you able to pull up a map of Google Earth?
Sure.
Where the property is? Okay. We're just going to, we're going to pull up a, overhead of the area on Google Earth. And I apologize if I've missed this in previous discussions, but has anyone talked about alternate plans, such as, because I'm in favor of putting in the sidewalks along Canville and Burgess. I think that the developer should follow procedure and protocol for the new subdivision having sidewalks. Okay, thank you. Can I shut this?
Yeah.
So is it a law that a crosswalk has to exist at an intersection, or can a pedestrian crosswalk exist? I think this is odd. It's odd. In the middle of a block. Does anyone, can anyone speak to that?
I'm going to ask, if possible, Director Babica, would you know the short answer to that question? Our Director of Public Works, Mr. Babica, who is fluent in the I dot code, I guess it would be, but...
Actually, this is a federal standard.
Okay.
It's in the MUTCD, 2009 edition. That's Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's a federal standard, which governs the placement of traffic signals as well as pavement markings and crosswalks. Crosswalks are encouraged to be installed at corners, where there's a logical landing and terminating point. It is possible to put them in mid-block, but that actually would require an engineering study and an engineering determination as to the appropriateness of a mid-block crossing, but they are generally discouraged, but they are not prohibited.
Thank you. Okay, so that's an opening. It's possible to have a crosswalk there. It's not totally illegal, it just needs to be studied further. I'd like to ask if you guys could put off this vote. I think that some more studies need to be done, and I think some more factors need to be taken into consideration. First of all, cyclists know that they're not allowed on sidewalks. They're supposed to be on the street, isn't that the law? And furthermore, there could be signage saying, you know, "Attention, sidewalk does not go through. Please use crosswalk at, you know, backtrack 100, you know, steps to whatever, Canville and Burgess." So I don't think that would be too hard to do. I know that the new, the three new houses, I assume there's a great possibility that children will be moving into those homes, and they'll need to use the school bus, they'll need to walk to the school bus stop, wherever it's going to be. It would be nice to have a sidewalk for those new homeowners. I'm sure that would be appreciated. I think it would also increase the property values of those new homes, which is good. And I believe that these students, if someone wants, I'd like to, I need to fact-check this, but I have friends that live right in this area, and their kids have to walk to high school. They don't receive bus service. So they have to cross Canville Road, but if those, the residents of those three new homes have students who eventually are high school students or right-of-way are high school students, it would be much easier and safer for those kids who have to walk to high school. And then I just have another question. If the sidewalk is only along Burgess Road, will there be, because right now, it doesn't look like there's a, like a marked crosswalk on the south side of Canville across Burgess. Does anyone know if there's one there or if it's going to be planned? So in other words, like, once you put the sidewalk in on the west side of Burgess Road, on the west side of Burgess Road, is there going to be a crosswalk? Can you guys, are you following me?
Just say that the applicant's request was to not include the sidewalks, so we haven't detailed those plans out yet, but we would take a look at that intersection and how it connects to the network and with existing crosswalks or new crosswalks that would be needed.
Okay, thank you, David. So is it safe to assume that if the sidewalk is included and installed on the west side of Burgess, that little strip that runs along the property, that there would be like a painted, like a striped crosswalk going across there on Canville? Oh, thank you.
Again, the installation of crosswalks are on a case-by-case basis. They're not mandatory or required, except in very limited applications around schools themselves. So a crosswalk across the street, their manual basically refers back to best engineering judgment, and I've been actually reviewing this with Chief Passerelli about some other issues, which is why it's fresh in my mind. I don't typically remember a 9,000 or 900-page document.
Okay, so I don't know if this has given any of you city council members food for thought, or if you feel like you just don't care and you just want to make your decision anyway, but I think that there's, there are many things to consider. You can think outside the box on this one, put up some signage. It's good to have sidewalks, it's good to connect people. You know, clearly, there's St. Peter Church, St. Peter School, Faith Lutheran Church, they also have a school. And having that sidewalk and hopefully putting in a crosswalk would really help connect the community. One of the challenges of Geneva is that we have these busy roads intersecting the town, like Randall Road is a huge divider, the train tracks is a huge divider, any type of busy thoroughfare is a huge divider. Kids can't play together, neighbors aren't really going to, you know, they kind of stay on their side of the busy road, and if we can facilitate ways to help people just cross the street to get to the other side, I think that's building community, and I just don't think that, well, I'll rephrase that, I'll rephrase that. I think this is really a great opportunity to put in the sidewalk and a crosswalk, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to comment? Anyone else in the dais? Before I recognize either Bruno or Singer for a second time, who has not yet spoken, wish to speak? Alderman Singer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The gentleman had addressed the council a moment ago. I take affront at the fact that you had implicated in some form that the way I voted and others had voted...
Mr. Singer, Robert's Rules of Order require that you make your statements to the chair, to not have a cross-conversation with a member of the audience.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I take affront at the gentleman that addressed the council a moment ago implicated that I and others that voted similarly did so because the sidewalk being placed there would be an inconvenience to the developer. In a sense, I feel, have challenged my integrity and the other members on this council who voted the way I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. David or maybe Mr. Stanton, oh, Director DeGroot or maybe Mr. Stanton, where in the construction process would, or in the timeline, would sidewalks typically be put in? Would that be early on, or would that be toward the end of?
It would be planned for early on. It would be included in the engineer's cost estimate, and there would be a letter of credit provided to ensure that they are installed. It depends on how quickly the subdivision would build out, when we know, if we expected it to happen quickly with known driveway locations, it would go in upfront early on.
My point being, which I think you answered, is we do need the engineering delaying the vote, or separating a vote on the sidewalks would delay the start of this construction simply because the engineering to be approved needs to be...
Right, the engineering has not been done for sidewalks at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir?
So this is Daniel Bowery again, 312 North Fifth Street in Geneva. I feel like I owe the council a point of clarification. I seem to have given you some of the idea that I'm questioning your integrity, and that was not at all my intent. My understanding is that the reason that we are having this discussion about sidewalks in the first place is because the developer in question requested that they be allowed to omit sidewalks from their development. And so in that case, it is very much convenient for them to leave it out. Now, I believe, I'm... Now, I believe, I'm here tonight because I believe that the city council is of people, made up of people with integrity and people doing what they think is right for this town. All right? So it is not my intention to, to conduct any character assassination while I'm up here, but I did want to observe that it is always more convenient to not build something than to build it. And so as Geneva grows and as more developments come along, they are also going to want to not build sidewalks, I presume. And so my question was instead about the precedent we are setting today, and I was not at all trying to cast aspersions on any particular council member.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the dais? Anyone from the audience? Alderman Cummings?
First, I apologize for this. I have about one page to read, and I know it's at least 90 degrees in here, and the meeting's running on. However, with that, first, let me say that I believe sidewalks are good. I think ultimately that we should have sidewalks, and that we should have sidewalks on both sides of the street within the entire city of Geneva. The more pedestrian-friendly the city of Geneva is, the more attractive this becomes as a town in which to live. Second, I'm guessing that there are economies of scale and efficiencies to be had with the installations of sidewalks. In other words, installing an eight-foot section of sidewalk might be, for example, $10 a foot, we're installing 1,000 feet of sidewalk, might be $8 or $9 a foot. Third, there are probably a lot of non-quantitative issues about having a bunch of, quote, sidewalks to nowhere all over the city. We might end up with 3,000 or 4,000 linear feet of unconnected, disjointed, somewhat laughable, quote, sidewalks to nowhere if we continue with the current policy. The result concerns me. Many people would obtain no satisfaction and no increased safety from a high amount of linear feet of sidewalk. Fourth, I'd like to see a smaller number of people gain a higher amount of satisfaction from usable and connected sidewalks, rather than a large number of people, again, gaining no satisfaction from sidewalks. Fifth, there are undoubtedly areas that are more in need of sidewalks than other areas. And if in the future we could triage that need, then there would be some sense to the order in which we put sidewalks into the city, and the most needed areas would receive the sidewalks first. Sixth, it appears the only pushback to sidewalks from developers and public is that they often say the sidewalks will, quote, "lead to nowhere." I don't have any emails or arguments stating that sidewalks are bad. I don't have any emails or arguments that nobody uses them, that they're in ICE, or et cetera. The arguments I hear are that some sidewalks will decrease safety rather than increase safety. I believe that. I run almost every morning at 5:00 AM, there is a sidewalk to nowhere on the south side of Route 38, at which point at about 5:35 or 5:40 in the morning, we cross four lanes of traffic on Route 38 to catch a sidewalk on the north side of 38. And I'm sure that that's not the only sidewalk to nowhere in the city, and I'm sure I'm not the only person doing this. For the money spent, the satisfaction rate on a sidewalk to nowhere is close to zero, simply because we would require the building of a currently useless project leading to nowhere. Lastly, I brought up the idea of a, quote, "new sidewalk bank," that I've heard Alderman Burkhart mention, and Alderman Bruno. The developer was against it and said he would, quote, "he would pay for something that didn't benefit him." I told him, "I understand that, but I disagree. I disagree with that position." Sidewalks serve and raise the quality of living in the entire city. A sidewalk bank would enable the city to triage based, need-based, to triage need based on safety and necessity, and then put in longer, more usable stretches of sidewalk at a potentially reduced investment level. Again, back to my second point about economies of scale. With each project, people would see immediate benefit. The developers would incur no more costs than they would if, if the sidewalk were installed right in front of their development. And if the developer is genuine in his or her argument regarding safety and the humor of a sidewalk leading to nowhere, safety would not be decreased, but in every case that we put a sidewalk in, safety would be increased, although possibly, probably, at some other location in the city. So in conclusion, I like the idea of a new sidewalk fund. I believe that we, and this is, this is for policy at some point in the future. I don't wanna change things midstream. I like the idea of a sidewalk fund. I believe that we could, for the same or less money than we're spending now, greatly increase the usage, greatly increase the safety and installation efficiency of sidewalks if we use this approach. At the Plan Commission, on, on the 26th of January, Mr. Stanton, at like 25:40 into the video, said, "It's not a money issue." He remarked that there was a reasonable expectation for sidewalks in the downtown area. There is no reasonable expectation here. If we had a policy and a goal in place that all, all areas in the city will eventually be served by sidewalks, then there would be a reasonable expectation of connectivity, but that connectivity might occur far from the developer's project. So my recommendations for policy or ordinance change would be, the funds would be held specifically for new sidewalks. The new sidewalks, when installed, hopefully would be longer and, and less costly per foot to put in. Benefits such as safety and usability would be realized immediately. This sidewalk that, that could go in on Canville is absolutely useless when we have a fully functioning, completely safe sidewalk on the north side of Canville. It would be an expenditure of, of time, energy, and materials into a useless thing, probably useless for years until we could connect it to the rest of the sidewalks. If we change a policy, we would tighten up what right now is a very loosely-written ordinance. And the, and the only way we run into these and discover these is, is to have a situation like this come up. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna slap Band-Aids over it and put in a sidewalk to nowhere, but I don't wanna walk away from it either. I think we've, we've discovered an issue that exists, a weakness that exists, and it's up to us now to find out a solution for that. I do like the idea of a sidewalk bank. The ordinance that we have now apparently causes, at a minimum, some confusion. It's definitely causing some useless segments of sidewalk to be built. So I'd like people to think about where we're going over the next few weeks or months after we're through this, and I'm going to vote in favor of having a sidewalk on Burgess and against on Canville. But where are we going past this to make this process seamless, efficient, safe, welcomed by the community? Thank you for putting up with that.
Anyone else in the dais who has not yet spoken? From the audience? Yes, sir? Good evening.
You can go ahead and stop me now. I don't live in Geneva until nine days from now, so if that's not allowed, I'll stop. My name is Mike Lencioni. I currently live at, in Wheaton, Illinois, just up the road. I do have a couple of questions before I kind of pose my point. Assuming, let's just assume for a second that the sidewalks were built, the fronts of these houses would face Canville Road, is that not correct?
Mr. DeGroot?
Maybe gain access from Canville, and that would be the front yard. The one on the corner could face Burgess or Canville. There's been talk about kind of angling it.
And regardless of if, if they do build sidewalks, there are, there conceivably would be a sidewalk from the front door to that sidewalk.
Or from the driveway.
Somewhere there, right, yeah. My question is kind of open-ended to anyone. Does anyone think that perhaps that sidewalk would not be a sidewalk to nowhere if the person living there were in a wheelchair? Maybe the fact that it goes to the corner would be helpful to that person?
Good evening, Council. Jill Johnson, 1607 Fairway Court. I guess I just actually have a clarification or question. It's my understanding that the council voted for sidewalks on the Havelcheck property along with the, the Roth property on 31. I was wondering what the difference is, why we're making an exception for one developer as opposed to the other two that were requiring sidewalks, and now that we're deciding to waive that.
Mr. DeGroot?
I would say with, with both of those projects, the applicant did not request the relief in either one of those situations.
Well, I just kinda wanted to piggyback onto what Jean was talking about as well. I do feel like that there's kind of a couple of loose ends that still need to be tied up, and I'm not sure that there's been enough consideration that has been given to this project, and I feel like I would also like to see it, I wanna see it prolonged, and I would like to delay the vote, just for the record, that I don't think that the vote is, it should be tonight. I think that we should delay it, and I just want that entered.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Hello again, and I just wanted to clarify something. I would, I'm mostly in favor of having a sidewalk along Canville and Burgess, but if a crosswalk can be established, and there is a crosswalk in the middle of a block, very close to where I live, it's wonderful. It's right along Williamsburg Avenue. Let's see. And it's used many, many times. So it does connect a little path that runs through homes, but it is certainly, it's in the middle of the street, and I'm trying to, I think it's just west of Greenwich, if I'm not mistaken. Let me see if I can move, wait. Is the mouse, okay, it's not a touchscreen, hang on one second. All right, if you guys can just bear with me for one moment. Do, do, do. Okay, and then I will try to zoom in just a little bit here. All right, so here you see this east-west road, Williamsburg, and then up here you have Sheffield, and then there's a little sidewalk here connecting on the two streets, and right here, in the middle of the block, wait a minute. Yeah, this is the crosswalk. And there is a, it's not really visible on this map, but it is striped. Kids use it. People walking the dogs use it. I live a few blocks from here, I'm very familiar with this area. And there are signs, there are brights, I think like neon yellow traffic signs, showing that it is a pedestrian crosswalk. It's very easy to see, it's very safe. Williamsburg is a busy road. The Geneva Police do a great job of monitoring it, but people get pulled over for speeding pretty much any time they decide to look for speeders, to give you a sense of, you know, it's, it's a highly traversed street. So yet, there's a safe pedestrian crosswalk here to connect the two sides. So just wanted to point this out of, as an example, it's very close to the other development that we've been discussing, while relatively close, it's in the same general area. So, and I'll just zoom back in on that. So just to give you some food for thought that this is possible, it would just be a wonderful addition to our community. I think that, it's, in my opinion, the developer just wants to do this to save money, and using safety as an excuse, but I wanna counter that, that this can be a highly safe place to cross, it will not be a sidewalk to nowhere. Thank you.
The speed limit on Williamsburg is 25, and the speed limit on Canville is 35. Do you know the difference in the trip counts between Canville and Williamsburg? Would you wanna guess at the difference, or, I mean, do you think that it's an apples-to-apples?
Well, let me ask you this. Here, here is another crosswalk along Canville, which is needed. There are many pedestrian crosswalks on Canville. There are also pedestrian crosswalks on Randall Road. That's an eight-lane highway. The speed limit is, for most people, 60 miles per hour, and that's semis. And it's people who are on their phone, and it's people who don't care that there's a pedestrian there. So I don't really, I understand what you're saying, that Canville is, the posted speed limit is 10 miles per hour higher, I'm just taking your word for it, but, you know, I don't think that, that really matters. I mean, there are pedestrian crosswalks on any, any street. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the speed zone on Canville actually starts at 25, goes to 30, goes to 35, drops back down, so it's, yeah, it's a fascinating stretch of road, so. Anyone else in the audience? From the dais? Alderman Burkhart?
I have a question for Mr. DeGroot. So Alderman Cummings and I talked about the sidewalk bank today. Alderman Bruno and I have talked about it a lot. We love this idea, because we would love to have funds available to connect these places where we have orphaned sidewalks. Now, David, I know you have some concerns with sidewalk banks. Is there a way, would there be a way to meld our policy and say, you know, sidewalks are required for subdivisions, but leave this kind of waiver in a situation like this, which is a pretty unique situation on a busy road, where a developer could instead, you know, get the waiver and put the, the value of the sidewalk into a fund, and after we had enough to, to feel like, I think, you know, I can see the problems coming, but, you know, to use, to have those funds available so that we could at some point, when we had the resources or the time or the crews, to use that in a place where we could connect a couple pieces that were, have been orphaned. You know, I was walking my dog on Anderson yesterday, and there are four separate places where the sidewalk ends, just, it's slap-dab in the middle of the block on the east side of Anderson. So I know there are places like that all over the city. So could you talk a bit about sidewalk banks and funds? Thanks. Thank you.
I wouldn't say that I or anyone else on the staff is opposed to a bank, but when the question came up, there are those concerns, some of which we've discussed tonight. How do you prioritize which gaps get filled in first? And are those gaps wanted to be filled in by the residents there, and are they gonna be upset that a subdivision on the other side of town is now impacting their front And then there's, there's the issue of cost, too. Prices are always gonna be cheaper today than they are tomorrow. If the city is doing the work, we have to pay prevailing wage where a developer does not. So if we're asking for a contribution, it should be at what it would cost the city to do it, and probably accommodate for some inflation, too. So I, there's a number of issues that would have to be worked out. I think it could be done, and I think it's a neat concept that we could take a closer look at, but I think those are some of the initial concerns that we, we had.
Perhaps Ms. Dawkins to, to talk about that. Do you need feedback from enough of us to say that's something we're interested in, staff looking into? You know, I know...
Something we can bring up at one of our, you know, Fifth Monday Policy Discussions or, or whatever, if there seems to be an interest in that, which I know at least three of you have indicated an interest. I see other heads nodding, so, so certainly that's something we can put on a future policy discussion. Obviously, does not affect this evening's discussion.
Right, okay. All right. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, David.
Alderman Malandra?
Dave, can you go to the Havelcheck development, particularly on South Street? So from east to west, where does it run?
The new sidewalk? On South Street?
Just the development, the subdivision, yeah, his whole development runs from...
Sorry to go in and out there. From about here to here? This is where the new road is, Cooper Lane, it does a horseshoe.
Further west end. One more, right there.
Right around here.
No, further west. To the house.
Well, yeah, the back of the lots, too. I guess I was looking at the roadway, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else in the audience, or from the dais? Alderman Marks?
To me, you know, I know that there is a sidewalk on the north side of that street that runs almost the whole length of it. The only time it doesn't is right by that small shopping center that was there, but the county took that out about four or five years ago to make sure people crossed the street at the intersection to go through the underpass under Randall. There was, there was some sidewalk taken out there, actually, so it doesn't go all the way, but to me, this is a safety issue, to have kids, especially with two schools there, to have a sidewalk go for 200 feet and someone to cross it. I don't know, I may be too old, but when I was young, I was always told to cross at an intersection, and I think it's best just to leave it at the intersection and let the children and the pedestrians cross there. I love the idea of a sidewalk bank, I think that is something we should really truly look into. I think, you know, you know, we talked about last week, looking at those ordinances to tighten this down, but to me, it's still just an issue of safety, so nothing other than that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Prior to the vote, a city attorney would like to make a comment.
I'm going to just address just one matter that Alderman Simontian raised, and this is really for the benefit of the city clerk, because the city clerk, at the end of the day, must account for all the votes taken by the city council. The matter that's on the floor right now is item 11C, which is for the approval of the preliminary slash final plaid of the subdivision, which, under our ordinance and under the state law, requires a concurrence of the city council, which would be six votes of the city council. When the vote is taken, the city clerk is going to record those votes, and the issue of whether an alderman votes present, does not vote, or abstains, only comes into play if that vote is required to make a determination on the issue on the floor. So if there is six votes without the abstention, without the voting of absent, then it doesn't become an issue. What Alderman Simontian's statement did not take into account is that the Illinois Supreme Court in 1982, and from, to my knowledge, for the last 35 years has been the law in this state, ruled in a case of Prosser versus the city of Fox, Fox Lake, that every vote needs to be accounted for, and that it's commonly been known as the Prosser Rule, so that if there is an abstention, or a voting of present, or a no vote, in a case where it requires the concurrence of the city council, then that abstention, or voting present, or no vote will go with the majority of who did vote. So it's not, it's, it could be, and go with the a's, or it could go with the nays. The Prosser Rule further states, and this comes into effect for your next item on the agenda, which is 11C, which is the, oh, excuse me, which, no, excuse me, it was 11A, which, 11B, which was the fee in lieu of land, that is, the reduction in the land cash, that required a two-thirds vote. The Prosser Rule says in that case, if someone votes abstaining, present, or doesn't vote, then it will go with the negative side, because the law says it needs two-thirds affirmative votes. You need, in that case, seven affirmative votes. There's no implication that that abstention, or voting present, or not voting goes with the affirmative side. It's considered a no vote. So that's the Prosser Rule. There are certain appellate court districts that have varied from that. To my knowledge, the second district has not. The Illinois Supreme Court rule in 1982 is still the prevailing rule, which basically says you're going to count every vote of every alderman who, who is present at that meeting, unless you recuse. For example, Alderman Sino, in an earlier case, recused herself, removed herself from the dais. Her vote, other than being present for the quorum, was not taken into account. So that's my only comment, and I guess it depends on how the vote comes out on this item. Whether or not an abstention, or voting present, or a note, or a silent vote, has any, any bearing on the final, on the final decision.
Alderman Cummings?
Is there a conflict between Illinois Governmental Ethics Act and State Officials and Employees Ethics Act and that law? And as a second question, is there a conflict-
First of all, let me just, I qualify my statement, I'm only talking about the voting. I'm not going to get into an opinion about political issues that may be on the floor. That was not-
Oh, that's not what I'm addressing.
All right.
No, no, I'm, and then also, the second question, in Robert's Rules of Order, that specifically say that an abstain is a non-vote. Now, they seem not to clarify the difference between recuse and abstain, or do they address that, and is there a conflict?
I'm, I'm an officer of the court, Alderman, and so I'm going to abide by the rule of law that's been established in the state, not by Robert's Rules, but by the rule of law.
Then back to the first question, Illinois Governmental Ethics Act and State Official and Employees Ethics Act, as amended 2014, in other words, amended after this case, still appears to show that an abstention is a non-vote.
Well, it, the court even talked about non-votes. If you were silent, you didn't say anything, the clerk still has to record a vote, in the court's opinion. If you're present for that quorum, the clerk has to record a vote.
Record it as a yea or nay, or just-
Yes, right.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais, or the audience? Mr. Clark, on the matter 11C. Just to clarify, those voting aye support the waiver request from Fargo Enterprise LLC, those voting nay do not support said request. Seven affirm, or excuse me, six affirmative votes are required. Mr. Clark?
Can I have a clarification? Should that enabler be voted against the entire thing, not just the-
Yeah, this is, this is on the plat.
On the plat, excuse me, on the plat.
This is on the plat, it has nothing to do, it's, it's a package deal. It's a package deal.
Mr. Clark?
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simontian?
Abstain.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burghardt?
Nay.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Mr. Clark, would you kindly read the totality of the votes cast this evening on this item, 11C?
Eight yays, one nay, one abstention.
Motion passes as presented. We skip down to item 11J.
Excuse me. D.
Approved Resolution Number 2017-11, authorizing a payment in lieu of required parking at Graham's 318, located at 318 South Third Streets.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Marks, seconded by Cummings. Questions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none, Mr. Clark, please take the roll.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simontian?
Nay.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burghardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Nine affirmative votes, one nay vote, the matter passes as presented. Item 11J is to approve ordinance number 2017-03, authorizing the issuance of waterworks and sewage revenue bonds from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Series 2017, in an aggregate amount not to exceed $12,500,000.
So moved.
Motion by Marks, seconded by Singer. This matter is removed from the consent agenda by Alderman Simontian. Alderman Simontian, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I thought this through after last week, and I guess I have a couple of what-if scenarios. Not knowing what's happening at the national level on a day-to-day basis, and if that in any way, shape, or form on the EPA side of the equation impacts the state level, or if the state decides to change this mandate, do we have any, or does this contract allow for, if we're in the middle of this project, and we no longer have to do it, or we're in the beginning of this project, that we can get out of this project without incurring the $12.5 million?
Director Babica, would you be so kind as to address the, I think this falls under the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices?
I'm going to put on a different hat now. Darker color.
I might want to give you legal advice, too, before you answer.
It's, it's my understanding that the state of Illinois is one of the last states in the Union to adopt this federal standard, that the state Illinois EPA actually protested and fought against the federal EPA for enacting this phosphorus standard. The requirements for this phosphorus level are actually more stringent in Wisconsin, upstream of us, and there is equally stringent for the receiving waters downstream of the state of Illinois, down around Kentucky, Tennessee, Missouri area. Therefore, with whatever changes are happening at the federal level, because again, the state of Illinois is one of the last states to do it, and basically lost the argument with the federal EPA, I do not see the standard going away. The Fox River has been deemed an impaired river, and this is one of the ways that the EPA and the Illinois EPA is looking at cleaning up that Fox River. Once we start that contract, I would be amazed if we would be able to back out of that contract. But I do know that if we, we don't start this contract, and we don't meet the timetables, is that we can be sanctioned by the Illinois EPA for being in substantial non-compliance with their regulations.
Okay, then I guess I have a question for our legal counsel.
And we, this did happen to the city of Geneva back in the 80s with the industrial pretreatment standards that the US EPA, we were one of five communities in the United States that was picked out by the US Attorney Office, United Attorney's Office, for prosecution, for fines, even though many, there were many communities that hadn't employed the full industrial pretreatment standards at that time. And I don't know how we were so lucky, that was the question of the day, but go ahead.
Maybe they made, made a mistake, it should have been Lake Geneva, right?
Maybe.
According to Mr. Simon. Well, I guess, not knowing what we don't know on the national level, the state of Illinois holding out as long as they have, and we're the last ones. Crazier things have happened, and it seems like crazier, crazy things are happening. It may be a coup that the state of Illinois held out as long as they did, if on a national level, they waive that, and we're the only ones remaining who haven't abided by the federal, and we are exonerated from having to do, having to do this. So all, my only issue here is, is in the, let's say, very unlikely event, that that or something like that should happen, is there any way contractually, we can at least stop the project and save $6 million, or, you know, whatever be the case, in that, and I'm looking is, is to tack on a safety net on the contractual basis in that unlikely
Well, first of all, my colleague, Mr. Vincent, examined that contract in my absence when I was on vacation, so.
The contract's not out, this is just the bond.
Oh, this is, yeah.
This is just the bond issuance.
This is for the bond issue, to approve the bond, well-
This is to get the loan.
Well, it's, it's really to, it's not really a bond issue, it's, it's, it's a loan with, through the IEP. So the contract is yet to come.
Are we, are we then beholding, if we, if we go this bond route, to have to spend the $12.5 million?
Well, you would, no, I suppose there could be a change of conditions. If you, if you closed on the bonds and obtained the money, and I'm not sure what the mechanism on this one is, Rich, whether it's all funded, or they fund it as required.
It was explained last week, yeah.
As required, which is, right, okay. So that's typical of Illinois funding, then your liability is really up to the point where, if there was a complete change of programs-
So we're not obligated for the $12.5, we're just obligated-
You may not be, in that circumstance, but I would agree with Rich, I think that it's very, very unlikely that that's going to happen. I think that if there's changes in Environmental Protection Agency regulations, it's in other areas, not in this area, and not in clean water, not in potable water, not in rivers and streams in urban areas.
I, I don't, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you, I'm just saying, the next four years are going to be an interesting, interesting ride.
I don't know, Rich, what's the, what's the projected build-out schedule? What's the time period on this?
We have to have the plan substantially dialed in over the next 18 months.
But we haven't got the, we haven't got the contract yet. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else on item 11J? We have a motion? Anyone in the audience? We have a second. Mr. Clark, please take the roll call.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simontian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burghardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Item 11J passes unanimously. We skip down to item number 13, new business. Is there anyone in the audience this evening with any new business they'd like to share? Questions, comments?
She was just reading from the summary.
From the dais?
Summary. We've done this before.
Oh, Mr. Babica?
Suppose this might be as good a time as any to start getting the press out. We'll be coordinating with Kevin Starr tomorrow. We have rescheduled the leaf collection program to resume on March 13th, which will be in Zones, A and C? For some reason, I want to go C and A for some reason, but Zone B was already completed before the program was suspended, so we will start putting that information out through the webpage, and getting that information out through all the various media outlets that we have, and I would respectfully request the city council members to pass a word in their conversations amongst their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, Alderman Merdecky?
I would like to wish my deceased father a happy 100th birthday today.
Indeed, happy birthday.
Thank you.
I was going to say, yeah, exactly. He was a young father. Anyone else? Item two, oh, excuse me. Item two, or, excuse me, motion to adjourn is the one.
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Simontian makes the motion. The ayes for lack of a second. Alderman Sino makes the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cameras are off, microphones are off.